General Jackson Drive, RZ 2013-5-1.
Um, the planning commission asked Mr. Sandifer to rezone to a more restrictive zone because he is very close to, uh, he's actually right across the street from residences. So, uh, he actually came in and did what we requested him to do and, uh, the planning commission recommended to approve.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, number three, an ordinance to set official holidays for the city of Hammond for the fiscal year 2013 through 2014 for non-civil service employees. There is a list attached to the agenda. Mayor Foster.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Uh, this is something that we normally handled at the budget and for some reason it slipped by us this year. Uh, I would like to ask the council, uh, at the appropriate time to consider adding October 14th Columbus Day. This is a holiday that is recognized by civil service employees and I think that it would be appropriate if we add this back to the approved holidays for the employees, uh, the non-civil service employees as well.
Any questions? May I? Any public questions or comments? Okay, then we'll move right into our regular scheduled meeting. Forward July 2nd, 2013, roll call please.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Okay, uh, Mr. Vic, would you ask blessed and fortunate, for your, please?
I want to return our attention to you on this evening for the Thanksgiving that this community did so much joy. As we are forced once again to celebrate the birthday of our nation, we especially thank you today for this great nation that you've given us. Even though we face challenges today, as challenges have been faced over many, many decades since our existence, we know that if we stay steadfast in our promise to do, one nation created under God, you continue to bless and keep this nation. We pray for the good men who decided to come to the city of Hammond. We ask for the Holy Spirit to give them wisdom to make the right decisions. We should give them grace to work the harmony, make our city a better place for all. We lift the name of all the good people in the city who contributed so much in their own special ways. Make Hammond a grateful city that it is, not a home. Thank you for the rest of you in those homes. And because you pray that you protect this nation of ours, especially protect the neighborhood, defend our country with the hope of God, so that one day we might all be in our homes and our hearts and our people and our nation and this world. We pray this thing to make the long-term services of the people.
Councilman Marshall, would you lead us in?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, do we have any council reports today?
When I did make one mention, Mr. President, I was, I was in, uh, last week I was in town, but, um, I did, um, read the articles in the Daily Star and also had a chance to talk to Tamara Denell and the Fuller Center and the work that they did, but I think the group was called World Changers, World Changing Ministry. But they did a tremendous job in Lincoln Park. I think we were, they were able to work on three homes and, uh, the, the, uh, feedback I've gotten from Ms. Ledbetter is just, she's amazed at what happened and I saw it from my, with my own eyes and, um, I just appreciate the effort from the Fuller Center to get that done and also to let you know that the, uh, the council know that the, the summer program that we're doing back in Lincoln Park, which has really been, uh, an initiative with, uh, from Wendy Smith, uh, just a concerned citizen, uh, we have the church, uh, Lincoln Park Baptist Church and, uh, probably about 25 kids every day. We've been able to provide, uh, nutritional meals, uh, for breakfast and lunch, as well as do some, um, some basic, uh, educational enhancement programs. No recreation, enough room, uh, but we did have a chance, uh, I was able to, um, get some support from, um, North Oaks OBGYN, my employer, as well as, um, Regions Bank and Beacon Light Baptist Church, and we were able to take 120 kids, combining two churches to, uh, the New Orleans Zoo last Friday, which was really, really a good event for that, for the community. So, I'm excited about what we, what's going on back in Lincoln Park and along with the potential, uh, park addition in that area, uh, and the sidewalks coming up in 2014. I just feel good about the progress we're making back in, uh, in Lincoln Park. I appreciate the council and the mayor's support. I know some of you just back there.
Okay. Uh, any other council reports? Mayor, you have a report for us?
Yes, sir. First thing I want to mention is the sales tax collections. I did send out a notice on sales tax collections. We were up again, uh, 6.01% total collections were a million, 463, 131. Thank you to the citizens of the city of Hammond, uh, that are shopping at home. Uh, wanna also mention that we will be holding fireworks tomorrow night. Um, the kickoff will be probably around 6 o'clock. Jason, is that right? I think you're on the committee. Uh, and we'll have, sir? Yeah, opening is 6:15, 6:30, but I think all of the activities will be open and the train will be running after 6 o'clock. Whitney Bank has again agreed to be our primary sponsor on this and we thank Whitney Bank. Uh, they, we do have several other sponsors, uh, that have helped to support this cause. Um, wanna also announce there will not be a garbage pickup, uh, on Thursday. For those of you who have garbage pickup on Thursday, uh, so there, the, the people that were normally picked up on Thursday, the next pickup will be on Monday. So, everybody will know that. Now, I do wanna make one other announcement. Uh, we are losing someone that's been a regular here at the city council meetings. William Carroll, uh, from the Hammond Daily Star. Uh, I think he has been really a great reporter for the city of Hammond and he is, he is moving on and he's gonna be editor of a newspaper in Vicksburg, Mississippi. So, congratulations, William, on your promotion. And, uh, especially wanna say thank you for, um, the publicity that you have, some good, some bad, but you've always, you've always reported, you've always reported it factually. So, uh, I wanna thank you for that and thank you for coming to the city of Hammond. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, old business report, a follow-up report from Bobby Mitchell, code enforcement officer regarding maintenance of properties in Hammond.
Mr. Mitchell is not here. Uh, where he is, he was supposed to be here. Pete's looking for him.
Okay, well, uh, tell you what, we'll just move right along and then whenever he makes it.
There he is right there.
Okay. He's coming?
Should we all go?
All right. We'll just, we'll just hold up on that big grant that we were gonna receive until Mr. Mitchell showed up. Oh, there he is. They're gonna give us a grant now that you showed up. Grant us what, I don't know, but how you doing?
How are you all doing, Mr.?
All right, Mr. Mitchell, you are on deck, sir?
On deck.
Yeah.
Up to bat.
Up to bat.
About true, yeah.
In the lineup.
In the center.
I want to give, um, appreciation to the council for newly appointed raise and also for the support that we have annually with our, with our budget for the grass cutting that we do. And of course, we're doing multiple things. I wanna pass out a copy of the ordinance, grass ordinance, or you can actually access it on your website under.
They're saying it's my favorites.
I'm sorry?
It's in my favorites on my phone.
Okay.
Any recitals?
I don't plan to, uh, do a total recital of it, but, um, I'm gonna refer to it from time to time and apologize for not having.
Thank you, sir.
Here to do a, uh, report of, of research that was requested, uh, primarily Councilman Marshall, the president of council, to, um, see where we might better the grass ordinance, if, if it's possible to do a betterment of the grass ordinance, to, um, expedite the process to better serve the citizens of Hammond. I'd like to just start out by doing a list of the, the obvious concerns that we do have and then go through our process that we're actually currently using to, uh, to handle the grass cutting and trash removal. First of all, the code enforcement is proactive in the sighting of approximately 40% of the locations that we handle with overgrown grass and weeds. And, uh, we do, as a result of that, we encourage citizens' complaints. We're not in objection to the complaints from citizens. Uh, if we were to wait for complaints on every site that we did, we'd be much further behind what we are. So, we, we go out and we get a complaint on a particular location and we pan the area and try to get, uh, as many as we can at one time. Secondly, we have, within the last three months, we have sighted over 125 properties of concern and roughly 75% of those are, have been completed either by the owner or hired by the city. And that number would be an approximation of, of 80 to 100 locations that are completed with 25 to 35 of those remaining that should be completed within the next two weeks. Of course, that door is revolving because we're also receiving additional complaints as we speak. Uh, thirdly, uh, currently the, um, the initial complaint will take anywhere from three to four weeks. And this is a process that's kinda frustrating for most complainants, taking anywhere from three to four weeks to complete, not start to finish. I will, uh, give a copy of the, uh, procedural breakdown that will explain exactly how we receive and handle those complaints. Uh, we also, uh, are hoping and trusting that the new computer program that's gonna be implemented by the city will expedite this process and of course, that would then very shortly shorten the timeframe. We're hoping that'll tick off at least, uh, seven to 10 days of completion from the initial complaint. Of course, keep in mind that this is just the initial sighting and completion. Uh, each time those properties grow for the second, third, fourth, and fifth time, uh, we don't have to re notify those property owners, but we can go out and follow that second or third step, which is to, to hire contractor and complete those. Uh, fourthly, uh, the current, most recent years of annual budgets, uh, will allow for limited hiring of contractors and that's in the amount of about 21,000 annually is what we're receiving to monitor and, um, complete properties that are hired by the city. Of course, I will eject that it's, it's difficult to know at the start of that fiscal budget year exactly how many properties we're on, are gonna be hiring on, 'cause we take those as we get them. And some property owners, of course, are responsible and they will take care of, of cutting those properties. And that, that changes from year to year. But of, of the approximate 300 locations that do, that we do annually, about half of those are hired by the city. About half of those are hired by the city. So, we, we don't have a lot of, uh, participation with property owners to do routine cutting of their properties without notice. Fifthly, the grass cutting ordinance allows for a charge of $2 per front foot, uh, for grass cutting and additional costs, costs for trash removal. Each time after we hire on the initial cut, the ordinance allows us to charge $3 a front foot. I will say that, uh, if we're not collecting on the $2 a front foot after the process is completed, um, it's probably gonna be a little more difficult to collect on the $3 a front foot. Ultimately, number six, that the answer to the increasing growing issue is to, uh, actually seize the property, those that are not, um, cutting and those that have fallen into what's called city adjudication or dilapidated state with, with the city taxes and terribly delinquent, to seize those properties and possibly, uh, either sell them or, or look at investors that are nonprofit that may want to, uh, turn those into profitable locations. I do have our procedural and this is, this is pretty interesting because it takes, uh, by process, it takes mandatory time for us to, to actually hire a contractor. We can't just go out, and this, this is why I'd encourage, encourage councilmen, I know you all are receiving quite a few complaints, to encourage you all to echo that for us is that when they call you on a Monday, your property's not gonna be taken care of in seven days, it's not gonna be the next Monday, it's not gonna be the next Tuesday. It's gonna have to follow its course. And, uh, here I have the copy, uh, of our, a list of procedures. It's titled City of Hammond Building Department Code Enforcement as a Sub-Department Administrative Procedures for Handling Complaints for the Following Violations. Of course, I'll list, uh, so that we get an idea of, of the volume that we handle and then we'll, we'll focus more on what we're here for, which is the grass and trash problem. But we handle abandoned and inoperable vehicles. We, uh, do of course, see me here regularly doing demolitions, recommendation for demolitions. We, we handle permitting of new dumpsters and cleanliness of existing dumpsters, uh, fencing permits, grass, of course, litter and litter abatement, uh, mobile home permitting and removal of violating mobile homes, uh, new signs for businesses and also removal of violating signs, temporary signs that are stuck out in the right of ways and also trash removal. But in the, in the grass, which is generally a, a problem from March to about late September or early October, you know, in a high growth, of course, we live in Louisiana and, uh, the rain and sun together kinda creates a, a great combination for, for grass growth. But every complaint is received and sent through the, uh, tracking system for follow-up and reports. First of all, we have the, uh, department receives complaint, a written document, documentation of complaint with the addresses of the violator and/or the property owner. That's, that's where we actually have some of our holdup. This is why the 30-day period is generally a good timeframe to use as a scale for the time that it takes to complete the initial complaint. 'Cause working with our GIS, Sipping, GIS system and mapping and correlating with the parish assessor's office to, to verify who the current owners or who the current, current owner is, takes anywhere from three to five days to, to verify that unless it's a, a repeat location that we know the owner of. After, after that initial process, the secretary sends out, my assistant sends out official certified notice to the known, last known property owner. Those, um, those notices generally take five to seven days for us to receive, uh, a return certified signed card that it was received by the proper owner. And of course, we have to wait until that time before we can move through our second step, which is a follow-up to see whether or not the property is still in violation. After which, we will, and I'll just read it here, take some photograph, verifies whether or not the property is, is needed for cutting. Now, if we fill the complaint, which sometimes we find that properties are not in compliance with, with the complaint because they have to be at least 18 inches, and Baru of Tham, of course, Council Marshal's tall, so Baru Tham, uh, 18 inches is about the average knee height, which is astronomical height for, for grass. And we understand the concerns of the adjacent property owners, but by ordinance, that's what we're following, the 18-inch height rule. And after we see that that is valid, and number four, we will follow the steps taken, we'll fill complaint form out, verify the address, uh, take a photograph, give information of the code administrative department to open a file so that we can start tracking these procedures. The, uh, we'll notify the property owner, certify mail, do an advertisement in the newspaper. If we feel that some of these owners are pretty much redundant, we know annually the ones we're gonna pretty much deal with, we'll send those to certified, uh, mail. But a lot of times, we'll actually place them in the newspaper, in the legal ad, so that we can expedite the process a little bit as opposed to going through the chasing of property owners. The, um, issuing of a cited, uh, citation of a notice to comply is also an option. Very seldom will we move forward to a strenuous process of a misdemeanor summons because that's not, you know, not within line of what we need to do with the grass and trash. Uh, that's generally handled with violators of illegal mobile homes or dumpster issues. Now, number five says the property owner, if they comply within the 10-day process, then we will actually close the file and consider that as a closed property. If they haven't completed the process, and number seven, within a requested time to see, we'll immediately hire a private contractor. And we also have the requirement of contractor being a coverage of $300,000 in liability insurance, so they are licensed bonded contractors that we hire to, uh, complete the work. We'll actually, um, and I don't wanna be petty about it, we actually have to meet with the contractor, do another follow-up, photograph, verify that the property is actually still tall, so that we can hire them to cut it. After that is completed, we'll go through the request for check process. Now, this is, uh, this is an ongoing, continuous process, even after we've hired on some of those locations, by the time we actually get the paperwork to the accountant department issued a check and have her to cite the property owner, giving them 10 days to pay the bill and if not paid, I'm sorry, I thought I turned it off. If not paid, that will be forwarded to the clerk's office so that we could actually lean the property. Now, this is done each time after we hire a contractor, even if it's the same location that we do six or seven times a year. Each time it's done, there's a lean place. So, what has happened invariably over the last 20 years, we've, we've had probably 150 of these locations that are unbalanced, they have more property of value, less property value than they have liens on. And so, ultimately, as, as I said in the opening statement, number six, the ultimate goal is, of course, is to try to seize the property, put it back out to, into fair market. You know, having said, having said that, with our volume being so high, along with all the other enforcement that we do, we're open for suggestions. I mean, we have two people work in the field. We both, as a supervisor, I'm in the office, answering a lot of questions on new signs and dealing with property owners as it relates to demolition and, uh, mobile home requests. So, generally, my time in the field is about two, two and a half hours a day, which limits me assisting my assistant with trying to expedite this process. That, uh, that's, that's pretty much my report as to where we are, what we're doing, annual issues that we're dealing with in terms of follow-up. I will say this, I am, I am pleased with the fact that most property owners, besides the one that are, that are in the adjudicated state, will, will comply with cutting their grass. We are, we are having some success with the owners complying with grass cutting. Compared to other cities, how do we fit? Well, I know this is probably a controversial issue with the city winning the last seven years, uh, cleaning the city contest. I think that speaks volumes for itself, considering the fact that our litter patrol, litter patrol with the Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee, which I did, uh, bring this preliminary request to them and we're all kinda looking at it the same way, the, the current procedure that we have. Although the procedure works, the timeframe is our real issue. But compared to other cities, to answer your question, I, I think we, as I drive around and see Hammond as one of the leading cities for cleanliness, uh, I think that that's contributed to you all's support with annual budget to give us what we need to, uh, to hire contractors and, and maintain as much as we can in the annual year, particularly in the area of grass cutting and demolition. We get calls all the time from other cities as to how we do what we do. So, I'm, I'm proud of what we're doing. Of course, anything could be better. I, I think when you compare us to other cities, particularly cities that are in our population range, I think we're, we're definitely in the leading three.
Mr. Bobby, I was doing a little bit of research, um, and it seemed like, and I don't know if this, it seems like it would add more work, but it, it looks like a lot of cities have a 10 or 12-inch, um, height, which it would seem like it would create more work, but maybe it would, it, maybe we'd get it before it got to 18 inches. I don't know, just wanted.
In terms of, in terms of putting more pressure on the owner to cut them sooner, I, I could see how.
Or even if it should have followed the same timeframe, it, it may not get to 18, you know, you could maybe get it taken care of within that timeframe, I, I don't know. I mean, I think it's a.
As in citing it sooner with the height, height limit being 12 inches.
But how, how many would that increase, you know, I don't know if that would, that's feasible, 'cause it would increase.
Well, our volume would certainly increase because, uh, there are some property owners that, that won't allow it to get to 18 inches, but they will play the game of, of waiting for the 12 to 13-inch height. This is not new to a lot of property owners. Let me say it that way, it's, it's a revolving door.
They know exactly when they need to stop.
They know exactly where they need to start being concerned. And let's face it, I mean, it's, it's a cost to them, so they're not gonna go out and keep it manicured if they can get by with cutting it at a higher height.
I mean, realistically, every two weeks, I cut my grass and it's three or four inches above the norm, right? On my last cut, so two weeks, six to eight inches. I mean, that's pretty short, 18 inches.
Well, we're, keep in mind, we're in Louisiana. After, after a rain or, well, a lot of rain and, uh, a little sunshine, we're gonna have some fast growth. After rain or a lot of rain and a little sunshine, we're going to have some fast growths.
Mr. Vic, you have a question?
I've briefly discussed the address of council. And I've addressed the council's report we had, and this is President Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee. Bobby and I have discussed briefly, but didn't go into much detail, is possible prioritization. There, I'm not going to name specific sites. There is one over here by Florida Parish Bank. Where, I will say, where the old, thank goodness, the old bank don't begin to develop, that's in the heart of the city, it's relatively visible. Somebody wants to fertilize that block, because you cut that grass one day, then the next day, it's that power gives. And that corner by S and X, that goods have got to be done, Bobby.
I think the city made this department...
It's the heart of the city, and sometimes you come on that corner, that grass is dead and gone. I don't know if there's a way to prioritize things where it's more visible, make it that indefinitely. There's very visible places, and I think should somehow get priority, I don't know if that can be done or not. But I'm just so concerned about the car, the Thomas Street, the Ford Street, and Boris and, of course, our son. Whether the old language is there, the old rapid roar, thank goodness, that got me again. That has been a perpetual hassle. When we keep having beautiful committee, we hear complaints about this all the time. And I know, I was troubled, I have to go through, because I would need to explain it. Keep having beautiful committee. I wish I was Solomon, I had his wisdom, and I had help, and I answered, I don't know what it did, but I don't feel some kind of priority system could be established, where we could at least keep some major cars in the city looking good. I apologize for the traction. A month ago, on a hot, hot, hot day, we managed to swam, and cleaned up really good all down Boris and Main Street since then. And we did, we made special notice of some car, golden, and blue. Go back there right now, literally breaks you off control. Don't know the answer, it's impossible, but I apologize to the city. It's not going as good as it did in May, and May can have really good progress. But, and we can say, I don't know why, to go through and try shop, but I do appreciate very much that the city does, dealing with people, both the cities and other people and other, keep beautiful committees. Thank you for the support that you give us, and the support that we get from city workers who come out on their days, and the financial support and support of Bobby and his staff.
Thank you, Mr. Vic.
Just a couple of, that's a question. You know, Bobby, I appreciate you going over the procedure and kind of laying out how things get done, but I just have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. One of the comments I have, and I think, I think where I see the biggest challenges, not so much in property, where you have active owners, you know, using it every day, I think you and I have talked, and you said, probably close to 70% of these lots that are kind of out of control are habitual owners who are just not paying any attention to any of the, any of the responses or citations that you might submit. So it's just an ongoing problem, year after year after year.
Correct.
And I think in some cases, you told me that in the last 10 years, you haven't really seen any movement in that regard. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so when you think about the fact that over 10 years, a decade of a policy and trying to get something done, and you're saying as a code enforcement officer that you haven't really seen movement. Now, I'm not discounting the progress in other areas that you're making, and I appreciate that. But I think what most of the citizens that I deal with on this grass issue is these vacant lots, these abandoned lots that are overgrown. As a matter of fact, I had a, I went to a citizen's house on Brenda Street, 102 Brenda the other day, and the lot next to his lot, they're like trees. The undergrowth is so large, it's probably like six feet tall. So, and that lot has never been cut. As a matter of fact, he tries to cut it himself, but it's an impossible task, nor does he, you know, get compensated for doing that type of stuff. And I think I happened to give you a call. And, but you know, there are, there are a lot of lots around Hammond like that. And so the initial request that I put before the council was, not so much to give a report of what we're doing and a report of how we're doing, but really, I still don't think we've sat down as a, or your department or as an administration to say, how do we really solve the problem? You've identified, you've laid out pretty clearly why we have the backlog, why we have the problems we have, but what I'm looking for is, okay, now what do we do? You know, or do we say, it is what it is, and we accept it the way it is, and we'll add another decade of underperforming ordinances or policies? Or do we, as an administration with the support of the council, decide how we want to solve the problem? And I guess that's where I am, so I'm still in a situation where I'm not necessarily happy with the fact that there still is no real solution, or at least a discussion about a solution, because if something's been not right for 10 years, wouldn't you think that at some point, we should do something different? Or do we just continue to do the same thing for another 10 years and get the same results?
Here's my outlook. I've been here 20 years, I've seen amendments as needed. Just '94, we, right away after the year, year after I was hired, we saw where the cost was an issue for charging property owners because it was too low, it was a dollar a foot. So to heighten the concern of the property owners, of course, we increased the cost of $2 a foot and $3 a foot subsequently, each time thereafter, with the administrative fee from $50 to $75. So that was one of the approaches that we took. And now we're in a situation where we've charged all this money to these properties, the liens are there, the properties are sitting dormant with no, I call it no true ownership, because like you say, they're not, they're not responding as owners either to maintain the property nor pay the taxes.
Nor do we have enough money budget for you to manage that.
Not as they need.
Nor do we really want to do that long-term. That's not a long-term strategy.
We're not, we definitely don't want to babysit, that's certainly something else.
So, this is the last question I have. So at what point do we, and this goes back, Mr. President, to my initial recommendation, is what is, is there a problem with your department creating a true action plan to solve the problem and presenting a solution to the problem? Doing the research and maybe looking, exhausting all possibilities of what we can do, and then coming back to the council with a recommendation that we can either support and know what we would have to do? But I still don't think we've gotten to that point yet, and I think it's been almost, it's probably been at least about two or three months. So I would like, I would like to still see some type of a solution, some action plan, some 10-point plan to get us from this 10 years of failing ordinances and policies that's not affecting, not giving you what you need, to something that can in turn give us something that will show some results so that our citizens can say that we're working on the problem, we're doing something. Because we get calls, I could tell you, just this summer alone, I've probably received about 30 calls. And you know, I called you on each one. Sometimes I even copy the mail on some of the emails I get. But at least 30 calls so far, just this summer alone, on lots not being cut. And it's a big, it's a big problem, it really, really is. And to say that in 10 years, we haven't moved the ball forward as far as that's concerned is alarming to me.
Yeah, in response to that, I just want to make sure we're both on the same page in that we don't use strong words that they're not being done, but they may not be doing, being taken care of as often as preferred by the adjacent property owners. I think that's pretty much where we are. We're not getting as regular of a cut that they would like to have, is what's actually happening. We're cutting the properties, we're just not cutting them regularly. And that's in a high volume.
I get complaints on six feet of grass, like grass growing over the fence. And I go by some of those, and I never really see the grass at the, I'm talking about grass that's overgrowing buildings, that's overgrowing fences, that's approaching other yards, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the real serious violations and error a lot. I was walking the other day just on a, a Stop the Violence walk the other night, and just in one neighborhood, I saw with my own eyes about seven lots of grass that was as tall as I am. Not just grass, but like, looks like it's just a jungle in some cases, in neighborhoods, these are vacant lots. And so I could tell you that those lots aren't being addressed because they're just there. Some of the access citizens, what's going on with this, they say, well, it's been like this forever. And I mean, I could, I could take you by and show them to you.
I will say this, obviously, they haven't called our office, and if it comes to the point where it's wooded, which I heard you mention earlier, if it's more woods than it is grass, then we don't address those. And that may be the reason why you're seeing those, because if it doesn't have access to a bush hog to get in and easily maneuver and cut grass, then we write that off as a wooded area, as undeveloped, and we don't, we don't pay attention to those. I think, I think one of the solutions to those lots would be maybe to amend the ordinance to allow maybe a 10-foot recessed cleared area for those wooded areas so that it wouldn't prevent a visibility situation for neighboring properties. I don't, I don't advise clearing of wooded areas, I certainly, certainly wouldn't recommend that.
And that's kind of what I'm looking at, Mr. President, you know, what I'm looking for is, I'm really not interested in developing a plan. I would like for us to come up with a plan from the administration that says, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to do to address these concerns we're getting, and then whatever support we need from the council, you know, we'll be in a position to do that. But, you know, if you're recommending that, then I would like to see those recommendations in some type of a format that we can either take a look at and decide what we have to do to make those things a reality.
This is, this is the way I understand what has happened here. When we, when we had a resolution addressing that, it seems to me that they had taken a look at that, and they, they, the administration, I'm saying they, have decided that there are no changes necessary to what they have. This is what I'm understanding.
Is that what we're saying?
That's, that's the way I understood what has went on. So we can do another resolution to get what you're talking about.
So we're saying that, that we're not making any changes, that the policy that we have and the way we process these complaints is acceptable?
In terms of, in terms of ordinance, and I like to make that clear, I'm saying, in terms of the ordinance, the city ordinance, in my opinion, the city ordinance is sufficient. What we're, what we're having a problem with is timeframe expediting the process. A computer system that will actually track, and I understand that's in the workings and the makings, to have iPods that will actually, we can take photographs, send those directly to a file that would initiate the complaint where we can expedite...
So I guess, with counsel, with what the president said, I guess, and I would wrap up after this, if you, are we saying then that the recommendation that we put out to, that I requested and the council approved, to come back with a, a action plan that we can implement to improve the grass cutting violations or the whole, just the grass cutting problem in the city? You're saying that the recommendation is that nothing changes, is what you're saying?
No, I'm not going that direction.
That's what the president was just saying.
That's the way I'm understanding, maybe I understood it wrong.
So maybe, so we want to make sure that gets cleared up, because if that's the case, then, then we're just, we're just talking to be talking. So if there are going to be changes, what I would like to have, Mr. President, is what those changes are going to be and be done with. You know, what other changes we're going to implement, and what's going to be the benefit of those changes to our citizens? And that's really all I want to know.
Okay. Mayor, I'm going to ask you to pipe in at this point, because I know, I know the administration keeps popping in here, and I've really tried to let Bobby handle this because he and I have had a lot of interaction in that, on this. And to answer the councilman's question, yes, we believe the ordinances currently on the books are sufficient. We are, Bobby, you correct me if I'm wrong now, we've had some discussions on this, we're not recommending any changes. Now, if the council chooses to budget more money, because $21,000 is not a whole lot of money, which has been in the budget, and we looked at it since 2009, I believe, is what that budget number is. The administration, as it's discussed here, we can go out, we can hire contractors all day long. We can go out, we can clear every lot that comes up. And it's, again, it's just a matter of money to do that. And the question is, is how do we spend the taxpayers' dollars the most efficiently? I don't think that we'll ever have the pristine lots that everybody would like to have. That's just a fact of life. We did look at the constitutional amendment that has been proposed, and I know that, that the constitutional amendment is down the line, because I was a little surprised that it's not actually going to be on the ballot until November of 2014. So it is a long way away, but what this constitutional amendment will allow to happen is that a municipality can go in, and if the taxes have not been made, have not been paid, then they can move forward with the process that Bobby is talking about. They can start with an adjudication process where the city can actually claim the property based on the fact that the taxes have not been paid on that property. Right now, that is limited to a three-year proposition and only for cities that have greater than, I believe it's 300,000 population, which is basically New Orleans, Shreveport, Baton Rouge. But the legislature, in its infinite wisdom, has passed that down to small municipalities. Unfortunately, it will be 2015 before we can enforce that ordinance. Once we can start acquiring these, these properties, and I agree with you, councilman, that we do need to do something with them, and there needs to be a process, and the process at that particular time would be, the city acquires the property, the city gets what it can out of it, and it puts it back in commerce. That's what we're trying to do with a couple of other lots that are currently in town.
I'm just, I'm just under the opinion that, of course, that process is, is probably the most needed, because if you relinquish the properties, then that reduces the volume, and of course, inadvertently, that creates a problem, a lesser problem for the budget. So that, along with the fact that we're going to have an implementation of a better tracking computer system, I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed it's going to take that timeframe also to get that computer system we really wanted today. We take, with the process we're using now, we're merging three programs to initiate a letter. And that's copy, pasting, and placing information per location, and you multiply that times 60, 70 letters, that's pretty time-consuming, as opposed to just selecting an address and spitting out the type of letter you want to go out.
Can we get a, Mr. President, last question, can we get a copy and writing of the, you know, a response to the resolution that the council passed from, and the reason I'm saying the administration, because I'm assuming the administration's encompassing of all people who work for the mayor, which would include Bobby. Can we, as a council, can we get something in writing as a response to the official request that we put out to have a resolution, a solution to the problem, whether it's, we've looked at it, there's nothing else we're going to do, and leave it at that, or whatever the recommendation is. I like to just have a copy of something that shows some type of a...
I'll leave that to the mayor. Mr. President, we have responded, the response is on public record. If the councilman desires, we'd be glad to get him a copy of the public record. I will not respond in writing, I will instruct my people not to respond in writing, because this is a political football that the councilman is trying to kick here.
No, I'm going to respond to that, because, can I respond to that? Because that is, that is the farthest thing from the truth. And I have been quite, I've been listening to Bobby, and we were talking about this thing, as this is not about, this is not a political football. And I, and I would ask you, Mr. Mayor, to not make those type of comments like that, you know, because that's not true. We're trying to focus on a real legitimate issue. And if you want to play politics with the issue, Mr. Mayor, that's up to you, but I'm not. I'm focusing on true issues that are coming up every single day in our districts. And we're going to say as a council, as a city, including the city council, that we've been working on something for 10 years, and in 10 years, we haven't been able to move the ball forward, and we're stuck in, and we're stuck at this, at this, at this place right now, and then we're going to say, but we're okay with that? If that's what the administration wants to say, then that's up to the... If that's what the administration wants to say, then that's up to the administration. But to me, it doesn't satisfy me because I want to see progress. I think there's something that we can be done. I think if we sit down at the table and try to work on solutions, we can come up with a solution. But it seems to me like we're trying to just say, "You know what? We're not gonna do anything at all." And I'm not finished, Mr. President. And then, is that up to the council to appropriate money for projects? Is it up to the council to approve money appropriated by the administration?
Oh, that's not correct.
If the administration decides that they want to invest more dollars into this project, then they can, then the administration can do that, and then the council might in turn approve that request. The council can, but I would think that if the administration said that this was a priority, that it would be done. You know, and so my request still is the same. We have not come up with a, we requested solutions, and what I'm being told from the mayor, and not from Bobby, because I don't think Bobby said it yet, that where we are is where we're gonna be, and period. And then we should just say, "Okay, that's the end of the story," which disappoints me as a city councilman.
Let me ask this question, Andre. I've always understood that the notifications are a state requirement as far as the amount of notification, the number of days that is required in this notification before we can just go in and cut their grass and charge them. Is that right?
We can tighten up some. It's basically due process and that's constitutional protection in going on somebody's property. You gotta notify them, you're putting on their property after the notice.
But that is above the ordinance. Am I understanding that right? We do not have the authority to just say, "Tomorrow, I'm going to cut that yard over there, and we're going to charge them."
You can't do that.
We can?
You cannot.
Cannot, okay.
There is some reasonable requirement of notice. Did you tighten up a little bit?
Okay. But for the most part, it is a state requirement, as I've always understood. Okay. So the reason I ask that, councilman, what I'm getting at is, the only way, we can sit down and hash it out, talk, and I've thought about it and I understand your concern, the only way I understand that we could do it is we would just go cut this grass for free, basically.
No, that's not the way I understand it.
No, I'm talking about, that's the only way I can see to get the, ultimately, the solution that you're looking for is just to, the city would just have to absorb cutting somebody's lot.
I'll give you an example. I talked to a citizen, and she's a property owner in Oklahoma. And she says, "In Oklahoma, they have made arrangements for owners that might live out of the state where they can actually coordinate with private contractors. Maybe it doesn't run through the city, but maybe there's a way where the city can facilitate this process to help homeowners or property owners to get access to a reasonable charge to keep their property at a respectful level." That's the solution. That's something we can explore. We haven't done that yet. And so that's just one simple example that if we sat down at a table and talked about those things, explored those things, and brought those people to the table and discussed it, we might, we may come up with a solution. But the struggle I have, Mr. President, is that even though those ideas are floating out there, we're not even thinking about those. We're not bringing those to the table, sitting down with those people, and talking about those things as an effort to solve a problem. This is not about politics. This is about truly trying to solve a problem.
I understand.
So why would we discount and not even explore those avenues when that's a possibility? We haven't, we can do that. Why not?
Well, I understand where you're coming from.
And that's why I asked the...
That is ultimately up to the administration's decision. He's stated his case, and we just have to move on from here. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
To make sure that I understand, I think I do. Bobby, am I clear in hearing you saying that basically what we are waiting on, basically is for the computers to kick in, and that will help you better regulate or alleviate some of the cutting that's needed? In a nutshell, yes. What it's gonna do is expedite the process, and that's what we're looking at. I think with the redundancy of routine cutting is where we're having a major issue with having that system, being able to shift those letters, send those letters out within a three-day timeframe as opposed to seven days. That starts the process. It automatically moves the follow-up faster. I think that's what happens with a lot of concerned citizens when they complain. It takes them about two weeks to even hear a response from where that process is, even though we tell them initially it's gonna take. And I try not to mislead them or tell them upfront that it's gonna take a while.
Bobby, didn't you just say that 70% of the citations are to owners that are not responding, and that has been the case for 10 years?
That's about 50% of locations.
So to Captain Martin's point, what is the computer gonna do? You're telling us as a council, you're telling this body that in the last 10 years, I'm gonna go down to 50 because initially you said 70, 50% of the violations are not, you're not even receiving a response to, and that's been going on for 10 years, an entire decade?
Bobby, could I just ask you a question?
Yes.
Is it beyond 10 years? Did this just start happening 10 years ago? You been with the city council?
Twenty years.
I mean, you been with the city 20 years? How long's this been going on?
Actually, the, what, to respond to his question, what's happening is, in the last 10 years, because of the initial seven years, which the first three years, we didn't have that issue because they hadn't been in violation or dilapidated state. But in those seven first years, the compilation of the violations started building, and so these last 10 to 12 years is where we're trying to get seizure of them.
We started recognizing them.
Right.
And that's good. I mean, I'm not trying to tie it to a 10-year period. Mr. Mayor, I'm not trying to tie this to 10 years.
I'm talking to Bobby, Mr. President. I'm not talking to the councilman.
Yeah, because we noticed those as a major problem around that timeframe and saw where it was creating a pattern, and so we needed to have something to address.
And just again, and that's great that we're doing that. I'm just being realistic. The councilman just asked you, Councilman Martin, you said, "Will the computers make a difference?" You said, "Well, that's pretty much sums it up." But then you also said earlier that this has been a habitual problem for the last decade at least, because that's when you really kind of identified it, not that it's tied to a 10-year span, but so in 10 years, if you haven't been able to make any progress, that would seem to me like that's not a good plan. So when we're asking as a council, and this is the last thing I'm gonna say, Mr. President, we asked the administration through your department to come up with a plan, okay? That was an initial request that the council voted on to do. I think it was four to one, we voted to do that. So then, we delayed it because of the, what was going on in the state legislatures regarding this whole process. We delayed that. We got the response back that it wasn't gonna be until 2014, and the citizens would have to vote on that. So, and that was really gonna affect the definition. So then I asked the president, asked President Hood to put it back on the agenda so we could come up and talk about the plan. And then what I got from the mayor was that the plan, "We're not gonna do anything. We're just gonna leave it like it is." And I'm not satisfied with that, so I think, Mr. President, at some point, the council would have to decide, "Do we accept that response from the mayor, or do we ask for something else?" And what I plan to do at the next council meeting is to think about that and look at that, and then I might bring another plan, a suggestion to the council, and then we can vote on what we do next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
That would need to be done by ordinance.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you.
In closing, I'd like to say that there are two separate issues at hand. The issues of the routine grass cutting procedure, which is a stalling tactic because of the notification process, and a seizure of these properties that are routine problems. Those are two separate items. And when I made the statement that I think that the ordinances on the books are working, is working because it works as a process, not that it's alleviating the fact that we need to seize those properties.
Because you're happy with the process.
The process, I think the process works.
Right. The results that you want to achieve are below your expectation.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the hard work that you and Robert do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any new grass businesses in the audience that'd like to be recognized right now? Maybe a grass cutting company or something? Okay. Here and none. How about approval of minutes from June 18, 2013?
Second.
Vote please.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Okay. No old resolutions, new resolutions. Number one, a resolution to authorize the Downtown Development District Office and the merchants located within the Downtown Development District to serve alcohol during the Hot August Night Event on Friday, August 16, 2013, from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM within the boundaries of West and East Robert Street, West Charles from Northwest Railroad to Cape Street, West and East Moore Street. Ms. Terry Lynn Smith, good afternoon.
Good evening, lady and gentleman. Nice to be here. We are at it again. This event is one of the biggest events in the region, so we're making sure that we have everything that we need. We have our noise waiver already. We have our street closures, our parking mall closures approved by the mayor. So this is our last approval effort. It's basically been done the same way, I can't only, I can't speak for 18 years, but I can speak for seven, the same way.
Any questions? Other questions or comments on this item? It's a pleasure, the council.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to grant a waiver of the City of Hammond's Open Container Law to the Downtown Development District Office and merchants located within the Downtown Development District on Friday, August 16, 2013, from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM within the boundaries of West East Robert, West Charles from Northwest Railroad to Cape Street, West and East Moore Streets, South Spruce and Pine Street. The concentration of visitors is on East and West Thomas Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Number three, a resolution, one, approving the submission of an application for up to $50,000 to the Louisiana Housing Corporation for the Emergency Solutions Grant Program to provide operating costs for emergency shelters, supportive services to homeless people, and homeless prevention activities. Two, agreeing to match the grant funds with up to $50,000 in in-kind donation provided by the nonprofit partners. And three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents.
This is a grant that we apply for and receive, we are fortunate to receive, every year up to this point. We partner with two folks in the parish. One is braces and one is Southeast Spouse Abuse, also known as Southeast Advocates for Family Empowerment. They're domestic violence, help our domestic violence survivors. The funds are generally used for utility assistance, for rental assistance, for folks who are caught in a bad situation, whether they've lost a job or been in the hospital for an extended time, facing chemotherapy, or in domestic violence situation.
So, second.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution, one, approving the submission of an application for $73,545 to the Lake Pontchartrain Basin Restoration Program to purchase backup generators for sewer lift stations. Two, agreeing to match the grant funds with $24,515 cash. And three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents.
The water and sewer department has worked very hard to prioritize the lift stations that need backup power when we have power outages. We are proposing to put in generators at those locations.
Motion to approve. Second.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Thank you, ladies. Number five, a resolution to approve the grant from DOTD for State Project Number H 009376, Airfield Drainage Improvement Phase One Design and Construction, and Drainage Improvements Phase Two Construction, Hammond North Shore Regional Airport, Dennisville Parish, Jason Hood.
Good evening. This is a continuation of the drainage project that we're doing out there at the airport. This will start the, will pay for the construction portion of the drainage project, which will include a couple of different areas of the airport where we see that the first priority of the, that will really get some of the major areas to start draining. And it's in the amount of about $1,093,208. And this will just continue us and allow us to award the, or go ahead and give the notice of prestige to the lowest bidder.
Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Jason, thank you. Okay, final adoption of ordinance. Number one, final adoption of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Leander and Sierra Alexander, the applicant, and JJ LLC, the owner, to allow placement of a mobile home meeting all code requirements on Lot 10, Block 6 of Barber's Edition, located at 602 Second Avenue, Zone R4, ECU 2013-5-4.
Second.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Okay. Number two, final adoption of an ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Gary and Joanne Sanford to rezone Lot 19A of the French Quarter subdivision from B2 to B1 located at 1112 General Jackson Drive, RZ 2013-5-4.
Motion to approve. Second.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Okay. What we will probably need to do here is make a motion to amend the...
Yeah. Councilman, what I'd recommend is that if you're inclined, make a motion to just add, just add Columbus Day, I've been amending the agenda, to add Columbus Day. Vote on that and then vote for the next.
Okay.
I move that we add Columbus Day. Do we need to know the actual date in there?
It's October 14.
October 14.
With the add Columbus Day, October 14, 2014, or 13, to the list of approved City of Hammond holidays for fiscal year 2013, 2014 for non-civil service employees. Second.
That's a motion, a second.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Add Columbus Day, right.
Act.
And you vote on the next.
All right. Final adoption, number three, final adoption of an ordinance to set official holidays for the City of Hammond for the fiscal year 2013-14 for non-civil service employees.
Second.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Okay. Introduction of ordinance and set public hearing. Number one, an introduction of an ordinance to amend the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 5, Article 1, Section 5.2, to provide exceptions to Sunday openings for retail establishments selling alcohol. Don Johnson.
Motion to introduce.
This is simply a motion to introduce. Up for discussion. You can second that if you need to.
Have the next read. You can second, Mr. President.
I'll second.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Motion fails.
Okay. Number two, an introduction of an ordinance to amend the policy and procedure manual for the City of Hammond approving the civil emergency pay policy. Mayor Foster.
Mr. President, to the council, to the public, I have met with the Fraternal Order of Police, the Police Union, and the Firefighters Union regarding the establishment of a civil emergency pay policy. If the council would be so inclined to introduce this, we'll discuss it in detail. I think the council has received a copy of the proposed policy, the draft of the proposed policy, and...
policy, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that we will have support of all of those groups at the public hearing.
Motion to introduce.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Number three, an introduction of an ordinance...
Introduce, sorry.
Introduction of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 2222 and to provide relative to the rotating record log. As you may have, may not have seen, I emailed the, the council. I have asked Andre to help me with amending the ordinance that would only allow wrecker services to get on our logs that are, have a business that is domiciled in Tangi Ho Parish.
And that's, and that's consistent with other parishes, right? That's what it said. Right. Motion to introduce.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams? Motion approved. To introduce public hearing.
All in favor?
All right.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Side.